All right, I think we've got a quorum of council. And it is a little bit past seven o'clock, so I'll call our meeting to order. Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick.
Here.
Councilmember Munson.
Here.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Here.
Councilmember Valento.
Here.
Mayor Bane.
Here. Our next item this evening is our Pledge of Allegiance. And I believe Dan may still be in the other meeting, so we may be without a flag this evening. I pledge allegiance to the flag
Flag.
of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Council, we have an agenda before you this evening. One item of note for tonight's agenda, we do have item 7D, which is liquor license and tobacco compliance failures. A quick item, there are public hearings that are required or noticed as part of that process. A quick item to note is that if council wishes to consider a full range of penalty options, which would be both fine and suspension, there is another layer of notification that is required of our license holders that we... So if we want to consider a full range of options, we should have a second public hearing to allow for that at our next meeting. I do know that we have a number of participants tonight that are planning to speak in public hearing. And so I would propose that we hold the public hearing. We gather some preliminary information and some feedback from the community, those who would wish to speak, and that we then table the topic until next meeting when council has an ability to consider a full range of penalties. Pete, did I tee that up appropriately? Just trying to set expectations of what's on the agenda this evening and what we would be considering.
Your honor, members of council. It's a little bit complicated. I apologize if I can't just give you a real simple, smooth answer. There will need to be a second public hearing. If council wants to consider options like suspension and revocation, the records supporting those all have, has to be made at that second hearing. So if people want to speak tonight and they also would like to talk about the grounds for a higher penalty, that would need to be made again in the second hearing.
And we would have just the confirmed timeline. So we would have a round of public hearings. There is a separate public hearing that's required for each license. We would hold those tonight as planned, as noticed, as planned, and as we have some participants tonight planning to speak. And then we would have a second round of public hearings and then council's full consideration of those penalties at our next council meeting. So just wanted that clarification on the agenda this evening, if council is open to considering that. And Karen, go ahead.
If we, if we do that, my understanding, and Pete can correct me if I'm wrong, is that for the liquor licenses, we would have to do a personal service on those for that public hearing and then certified mail for the tobacco licenses. I'm not sure if the next, very next council meeting is going to be enough time for all that notice to get that accomplished. Pete can look at the schedule because we would have to do a notification in the paper and then do that personal service. Some of, some of these licenses are out of state. The, the license, license holder is out of state. Business, of course, here, but the owners are out of state. And so, I mean, do we, would we do public service to the direct owner or to the manager at the actual business? How would that play out, Pete?
So with that, and I guess, Pete, I would ask, do we, when we table this evening, do we need to identify the date on when we will bring that item back? Do we need to be specific? And maybe there's opportunity for that to be worked on during our meeting. And when we get to that agenda item, let's just have the specificity of if we're going to table, what meeting will we be bringing that back?
Your honor, members of council, you do not need to specify tonight when the next meeting will be. I'd be happy to work with staff offline on how and where to get people served and what timelines we need in order to make sure that we, we get everything we done, we need to. I agree with Karen that doing it all before the next meeting might be a challenge.
Understood. So with that note of what is on the agenda this evening, I would look for a motion to approve.
I'm moved.
We have a motion from councilmember Beistrum and a second from councilmember Munson. Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
Councilmember Valento.
Aye.
Mayor Bane.
Aye, agenda's approved. Our next item this evening is open forum. Quick couple of logistics items to note. This is open forum, opportunities of the public or an opportunity for members of the public to speak to council on any topic of your choosing. Please note that we do also have those scheduled public hearings for the tobacco and liquor licenses. So if you are planning to speak on that topic, you're welcome to do so now or at the hearing. We're happy to hear your feedback at any time. With that, we can open up open forum. And Karen, do you have anybody for open forum this evening?
I don't specifically have anyone for open forum. I have several attendees waiting, and so I would need to know, I guess, by raise of hand, if any of attendees can raise your hand if you wanted to talk right now so that I can see that and I would be able to move you into the meeting to speak at this point in time.
Any attendees wishing to speak at this time? The raise hand function is in the bottom of your Zoom tray. Hold for just a moment. All right, not seeing anybody for open forum. We will move on to our consent agenda this evening. Counsel, our consent agenda is items 6A through 6K. I would entertain any changes or a motion.
Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve the consent agenda 6A through 6K.
I have a second.
We have a motion from councilmember Husnick and a second from councilmember Munson. Karen, could we have a roll call on the consent agenda, please?
Councilmember Husnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
Councilmember Valento.
Aye.
Mayor Bane.
Aye, consent agenda is approved. Our next item this evening is Resolution 01252101, accepting donations for the Forest Lake Police Department, Chief Peterson.
Yeah, mayor and city council members, good evening. What we received a week ago was a couple of donations by two individuals that wished not to be identified. They were anonymous and they asked that the donations go to the Forest Lake Police Department. And so this resolution is just accepting those two donations. Once again, I honestly don't know who those individuals are, so I just want to publicly thank them just in case they are viewing this city council meeting.
Very good, thank you. I would move that we pass Resolution 01252101, accepting donations with gratitude.
I'll second.
A motion and a second from councilmember Husnick. Any discussion? Karen, now, Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum. Councilmember Valento.
Aye.
Mayor Bane.
Aye, motion approved. Our next item this evening, CBRE listing renewal agreement for Headwaters 123. Dan, I believe, Patrick.
Yeah, Dan, he's still in the, the other EDA. So what you have in front of you tonight is the renewal for the listing of the Headwaters 123 properties. We have Dan Peterson, the listing agent with us to go over where we've been at and what might be possible in the future and just give us kind of a market recap. We believe we should still continue with CBRE as our listing agent and hopefully soon be successful in some kind of a sale. So somebody can bring Dan into it. I think I see him there, so I'll turn it over to him.
Hey, Dan, welcome.
Thank you, thank you, mayor, thank you, council, thank you, staff. I'm gonna try to be brief this evening, but I have a couple of slides here. So if you bear with me, I'm just gonna share my, can I share my screen here?
Yes, please.
And then you can tell me if you see.
Yep, we see it.
Green screen, okay. Recapping of what would be an interesting year, I wanted to touch on a couple of things going on in the market today and where we've been at with some of the interest on the site and kind of how we see things for '21. And certainly be open to taking any questions from, from councilor, staff, or anyone as it would be deemed appropriate by the council in this forum tonight as well. As I think many can understand, the pandemic has negatively affected many aspects of commercial real estate development. However, interestingly enough, data centers and industrial real estate have really been the two bright spots that we would report from this last year. I brought a chart here to kind of show you a little bit of what's happened. And the indicator that I would point out here is that these are REITs, real estate investment trusts, that work in all the major product categories of commercial real estate. And if you look at the far side of the left there, you can see that retail is actually down about 33% over the year. And that's not, I don't think, too surprising to anyone. But with the transition of what's been going on, there's been increases in demand. And on the far right, you can see that data centers have outperformed most other segments of the business. And industrial is not too far behind. I think it, it can be assumed that a lot of the development that has resulted to these two specific product groups has prospered in large part from the work from home and, and other lockdown activities. E-commerce and distribution businesses have driven an increase in industrial development and e-commerce and internet use and basically remote everything has caused an increased demand for hyperscale IT services, thus driving up more demand for data centers. We expect this demand to continue into '21 along with what we saw as a pent-up demand or a delay in some of the enterprise data center activities. So a lot of stuff that was on pause during the pandemic, we expect to come back to the market and in turn push more data center development to be expanded. Certainly in primary data center markets where it's happened thus far, same, similar to distribution markets, but secondary and tertiary markets, which we call ourselves here, are expected to grow even faster this year primarily because of last mile activities on that distribution side. And then also the computing needs, if you're familiar with what's happening with edge technologies or as far as edge computing needing to be pushed closer to the end user. So from those perspectives, we feel strong about data center and, and also industrials, the two primary categories of interest where we've seen most of our traction and development, certainly nationally and to a degree locally. The next slide I'm showing you here is current industrial construction. And while it's, it's been primarily focused inside the submarkets closer in town, what's happening here is that we expect it to begin to push out as the inventory that's available decreases or land sites that are available do as well. And certainly as needs evolve, as populations develop, transportation changes. I don't want to go too off onto a tangent, but as, even as autonomous vehicles become more prevalent in distribution, we're going to see truck travel change drastically and in turn logistics is going to be affected. So we really see, again, the industrial and also the heavy infrastructure data center use is two primarily benefactors of a lot of what's going to be happening in the result of those two trends. Now, more specifically to our site and our market, getting away from industrial on the data center side, just in the last quarter, we saw one service provider break ground on a new development as well as another out-of-market data center service provider coming here to put some land under contract. And that was something that we continue to see. I would call it a fairly steady trickle of activity, again, in light of pandemic activities, a fairly consistent draw of inquiry from outside the market. We have submitted the Headwaters site to three other out-of-market service providers and two enterprise site selection groups for similar developments in the last quarter. As of today, our site is still under, under consideration for the 80-plus acre Greater MSP project. And we expect to hear more on that front in February. Aside from those, in all honesty, the site traffic has been relatively slow with COVID. But in the last 90 days, we've had inquiries from Silicon Valley, Atlanta, Dallas, New Jersey, as well as over 300 broker views on Catalyst and CoStar, which are our primary broker marketing tools. At this point, all interest has been slow in approaching or communicating about any next steps. But in the meantime, we continue our email campaign with the industry and also directly contact end users and other representatives when we learn of a project that might be a potential fit. The takeaway here is the, the data center and industrial are two of the commercial real estate categories we're seeing the most development. But that said, we still market this site to a full spectrum of commercial users and potential buyers. When we, you know, we examine each requirement that we encounter as it generally fits our site characteristics, the two, the 20 to 120-plus acres, flexible zoning, infrastructure delivered to site. So we're not really limiting ourselves to just who the most favored nations are at this point. But again, I think there's a, there's a good mix of local and national exposure happening to the site right now. And sometimes you're trying to get lucky with some lightning, but at the same token, I think we're, we're putting our, as where our, our goal was when we endeavored on this a year ago, was to make sure that we were getting on the list on a national basis for these projects. And we really are doing that at this point. Now, should the trend continue with the data center market, we really feel that there's going to be more of that development in our area. And in turn, this will mean that we're going to be on the list more often. It doesn't guarantee a deal that gets done or that this is the direction ultimately the city wants to take with the site, but it does leave us open to, to more options than, than maybe what was previously available. So I'll pause there and see if there's any questions from anyone. Did anyone have any questions regarding what we've been doing? Who we've been dealing with or anything that I might be able to answer?
I don't hear any questions coming forth.
Hey, I'm sorry, my, my internet dropped and I just rejoined. So I'm here and reconnecting, I'm on my phone, though. But were there, were there any questions for Dan this evening?
I don't, I don't have a question, maybe, maybe just a comment. I, I can certainly see why this has been a really, really challenging environment, Dan. Do you, you have any, and maybe I do have a question. Do you have any, are you, are you kind of changing your approach at all in any way, shape, or form? You know, to adjust to kind, kind of the current state of the market with COVID? You know, any, any, any unique or different strategies? Or is it, is there, is there just kind of one pathway to get this work done?
You know, I, it's a good question. I don't know that there's any one pathway. I think ultimately the more creative we can get, regardless of what kind of economic situation or what trend is more prevalent than another, to make sure that we're getting this in front of audiences. I know that it's a numbers game when it comes to who's out there developing what. And so there's certainly less of, of a certain group because of what's been going on due to COVID. In some ways, we've been prepped for this on a national level of marketing sites. Doing things virtually is, has been the game plan all along. So a digital presentation of the site, you know, and the tools that we've developed have prepared us for this day in a certain way. Because a lot of groups also like to anonymously view a property from a 10-foot, 10,000-foot level. And, and you want to put all the kind of tools in front of them so that they can make up their own mind and approach when they are. My point earlier about is the groups have thus far not really stuck their neck out and made themselves too known to us. We use these tools to know who is looking at it or who represents them. Sometimes it's maybe going after a different type of representative for those kinds of developments. So we might change that up a bit. It might be less construction firms, it might be more tax incentive folks or, you know, those kinds of things. I know that was a little rambling, but did that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, that's very, very helpful, thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions for Dan this evening? Dan, my, my question was very similar to councilmember Beistrum's and just, and I think you've answered it already and just in that, is there anything different that we should be doing, you know, related to COVID and current market conditions? And you've, you've kind of answered that already, so thank you. It's helpful to hear the update and it's, it's great to see that we're well positioned. And thank you for joining us live here tonight. I apologize for the technology issues on my side.
Well, you wouldn't be alone if you wouldn't have a Zoom call with a few technology issues. It's been quite a year of those, so.
Right, that is exactly right.
Thank you for having, and allowing CBRE to work with you as well. We're very proud to do so.
Perfect.
We're looking, we're looking for a motion on this?
Yes, we are looking for an approval of the listing renewal amendment agreement.
I'd make a motion that we renew the listing renewal amendment agreement with, for the Headwaters 123, with CBRE.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I have a second.
We have a motion from councilmember Husnick and a second from councilmember Munson. Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Sorry about that, councilmember.
Husnick is voting aye.
Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
Councilmember Valento.
Aye.
Mayor Bane.
Aye, motion approved. Thank you again, Dan, have a great evening.
Thank you, good evening.
Council, our next agenda, our next agenda this, item this evening is Resolution 01252102, Forest Hills Farms, second edition, preliminary PUD and plat. Donovan, I believe you're walking us through this. And council, my internet just came up, I'm just going to transition back to my computer, so I will be right back. Dan, go ahead, or Donovan, go ahead.
Donovan, who else do I have? I put Jaren in the meeting and who else needs to come for this council?
Yeah, John Bender, please.
Done, okay.
Mayor members of council like to present the preliminary plat and preliminary PUD application for Forest Hills Farm 2. This is an application that is on some land that might be familiar to you from years ago when the first addition was developed. It's located here at the intersection of North Shore Trail and Highway 97. As you can see, there's already rough grading, even a rough outline of a road for that, of course, indicating its previous history. This being Forest Hills Farm, first edition here. This land was originally platted in '07 for preliminary plat, but never went to final plat. And now, local builder Jaren Johnson with his city, with his project engineer, John Bender, who are joining us in this call, are proposing the, the 35-lot minor subdivision that shares that same road network you saw in the first, in the first screen there. So access is from North Shore Trail and is a main east-west road with a loop. This outlaw is one of two, Outlet A, and there's Outlet B adjacent to North Shore Trail. These would be dedicated to the HOA and maintained by the HOA. The project is built. And there is a cul-de-sac road leading north here. This being a PUD application, the builder has proposed, a developer has proposed lots, they're smaller than a 25,000-square-foot minimum size for the single-family zoning district. There are a number of lots that don't have that minimum with an area, but no lots are smaller than 15,000 square feet, about a third of an acre, or no less than 80 feet in width. The, the basic net density on this, that is areas that don't, aren't wetland or steep slopes, which there are, you know, over three and a half acres of, of those, those kind of land, which makes, you know, putting the sites in here a little challenging first. The basic net density is pretty consistent, it's about 1.4 dwelling per net acre for the land, which almost meets the comprehensive plan minimum density. This project did have review with the planning commission and there was a recommend, recommendation of a, of city council approval for this preliminary PUD, preliminary plat. The conversation focused on, you know, on the, the difference in, in some of the lot sizes from the, the original preliminary plat, which had 28, this is back in 2007. After that was not finally platted, this became a simple outlot. But, and there was, at the neighborhood meeting and the planning commission, there was some concerns expressed about the narrowness of the lots, the safety of, of the, the other wells within the area. This property is served by public sewer and private well, you know, as is the Forest Hills Farm 1. And the project engineer, you know, assured, you know, the, the questioner that because it is on city sewer, you know, the big concerns about wells or the, you know, the aquifer being contaminated are really, really minimized. As a PUD application, the, you know, city says what, you know, basically, what sort of public benefit will you provide for that kind of flexibility with the zoning size? And what staff is recommending? And also what the, the, you know, planning commission recommended for approval is the, a 10-foot trail that'll go along the, this main, this main road. Let me get this a little larger here. The, the main east-west road as well as pedestrian route going northern, north, which is, you know, building a sidewalk, of course, is standard for one side of the road with our engineering standards. However, this is a more robust pedestrian trail, 10-foot wide by two minutes, than also wood gradient, wood shipping, the existing public trail that's within the public park that was dedicated with the original Forest Hills Farm approval. It's about 19 acres. And this is an area that is truly beautiful. I mean, it's steep slopes, you have, you have a lake here, Kniffris Forest, and this trail winds through all the way down to, you know, show you again, a little larger screen, to the, the outlot for the first addition, which there is a public trail, public easement, coming out right about here and matching up with this Caroline Court cul-de-sac. And of course, there's a sidewalk we see going through Forest Hills Farm, first edition. And with that, we, you know, have approximately a mile wide, mile-long loop through both, along the city streets. through both along the city streets and through that wood chip trail that is existing but needs some maintenance. And maintenance also was part of the neighborhood meeting conversation. And basically, you know, we, the city, you know, if this Forest Hills Farm Second Edition is constructed, well, even if it's not, the city does have some maintenance to do as far as maintain the park and also policing ATV traffic through there, which was a concern of the neighboring residents. And this is a preliminary PUD. So this is something that will, you know, if approved by council, we'll come back with the final PUD, final plat application. And there are, there are a number of concerns that the city engineer expressed in his, in his comment letter that, of course, will have to be addressed. And there was further talk about that meeting those concerns in a, a call, a call with the project team last week. I don't, I don't have concerns regarding those. And much of the, as I mentioned, much of the site has been graded out and the, it's essentially, you know, you know, building within the, the defined footprint with some, some modifications to make sure that current engineering standards are, are adhered to. The there's no signage proposed at this time and the woodland preservation plan will be submitted with the, with the final plat and PUD application. So at this point, the staff recommendation is to approve Resolution 1252102 to approve both the preliminary PUD, preliminary plat, subject to staff conditions. And with that, I'm happy to take in questions from council.
Thank you, Donovan. Council, let's take a round of questions if you have questions for Donovan and then we'll invite both Jaren and John to have any, make any comments they might want to make of council. So any, any initial questions before we hear from the developer, development team?
I, I'm not sure if this is a development team question or Donovan question, but I, I think I may have missed it here along the way, Donovan. What, what types of homes are going in here? I know Mr. Johnson is pretty well known for his beautiful single level slab on grade homes and, you know, they tend to be in a little smaller, you know, in a little smaller lot size and just kind of curious, are these single family homes? Are they?
Yeah, they're, they're certainly a single family. I'd probably leave it to Mr. Johnson to, you know, give a better description of what the homes he imagines for this, this area.
Well, hello.
Go ahead, Jen. Go ahead.
You hear me?
We can. Glad you're here.
Nice to meet you all. So yeah, you're, you're right. I, I accidentally got in the niche of our single family homes around here from oh, six, seven, eight years ago, we took over a couple of Bruggeman home projects in the area. And it really got us going in the association maintained idea. And my background with my father is actually from day one, we started the company 22 years ago with him is a true custom builder. I mean, we were doing, you know, independent custom homes and, and big homes and, and we know how to do that. The one thing intriguing about this development, you know, Excelsior Group was coming to me for years and saying, we're going to develop this. He'd be a good fit. And I see it as what I'm proposing to do here is a single family association maintained neighborhood where they're going to be uniquely different. Most lots are going to be homes with basements. And that's what we did before we started doing all the single family homes that a lot of you are aware of. So we're definitely geared as a builder who can build and design a nice home with basements. And I'm looking at this as I, I don't want to force a 55 plus idea like I did. I don't want to say forced up there, but Wyoming said, hey, you should do a 55 plus community. I am looking at this as a, a nice community where we're going to be marketing to maybe empty nesters, people with families is fine. The price point's going to be above a half million dollars. It has to be with a lot of prices, developing costs. And, you know, most of them will have basements. So they're going to be, you know, 3,000, some probably 4,000 plus square foot homes with finished basements. So it's, it's going to be a nice community. I know that Al, you know, I, I look up to him, what he started and, and I know in the beginning, you know, he, he built some big, big homes in the first phase and I don't want to force that in here. I, I don't want to, you know, have to put up 1.5 million dollar two stories in here because there just isn't a market for that in Forest Lake right now. But there is a market for what I'm looking at doing and, and I have a lot of people that I've been testing the waters of this for, for years. You know, I, I knew this as an opportunity years ago. I, I never thought I'd be the developer of it. I, I kind of had to make that decision because Ben Schmidt said, hey, we're, we're selling this, you know, we're not going to develop it. And I've been excited to be a builder in there and now we're in this spot. So we, we can bring what the community is asking for. And, and without going way expensive, but you know, I'm not a national builder. We're not going to, we're not going to put cookie cutters in there either. So hopefully that's okay with all you.
Other questions for either staff or the development team at this point? We can just open it up. I would, so one of Donovan, you made comment and I'm a little confused on what was the, there was a minimum around, it wasn't lot size that wasn't met. What is it? What is it that that is not? I just want to be clear on what is out of standard.
Okay, there is a range of minimum residential density for this low density future land use and it's 1.5 to three dwellings per acre. What they have is 1.42 dwellings per acre. And this is, I mean, it's, it's kind of, that is what the ideal is that gets within that range. There are many places it can be, there are many places within, like Chestnut Creek, for instance, there was, there's wetlands where you couldn't, you couldn't reach that minimum density. As well as here, it's, it's a steep slopes and wetlands that prevent that.
Okay. That's helpful. I, I guess I'd ask the development team, you got to ask the very specific question to start off with, start off with, were there any broad comments you wanted to make or things you wanted council to consider at this time?
Hey, John, anything, John, anything that you want to present or ideas?
No, I don't think anything specific to add beyond what Donovan's already said. We're pleased to present this and I'm thankful to the council and to mayor for, for hearing out our proposal. I think it's, I've, I've walked the site with Jaren and I understand why there's pride for this land from both the neighbors and Jaren himself. It is a very beautiful piece of property and I think we'll have a a beautiful addition once we're complete with our project.
Excellent. Thank you. I do have a question, Donovan. I think this is more for you related to the, the trail maintenance. So there's, I, I understand there's two pieces. One is the paved 10 foot path and then the second piece is the updating the wood, wood chips on the public land. Is that, but that's existing parkland from the previous development, right? So that's not new parkland that is existing. Is that, is that right?
Correct. Yeah. Something that's unique about this property is that the parkland dedication requirement was satisfied with that initial 19 plus acre dedication now back with the original development. I think the, it was something around 73 acres total. And so they dedicate this, you know, 19 plus acres to satisfy what they thought was going to be, you know, two, two phases of the project. It just took them a bit longer than they expected and a different owner.
Right. So we have existing maintenance responsibility for that existing trail. Is that right? And this is this contribution from the, the phase two project team is essentially relieving us of that requirement. Is that an accurate statement?
No, it's actually, no, it's, it's city land. So it's, it's city maintenance. The what I found in my site visit is that the, the trail hasn't been maintained. It's rudded from ATV vehicle travel and it does need some, some, some grading and then wood chips put on it. And, you know, that would be a public amenity that the, the city would receive and then we wouldn't maintain. I mean, the city should have been maintained all along, but there's just not really been a constituency requesting that. And I know Public Works goes in there on occasion. I know that because they've taken deer stands out of there, temporary deer stands out of there before. But it's, you know, it would still be, you know, city maintained, but it would, I think, you know, get a lot more use as a loop and just with more residents in the neighborhood. And it's something that, I mean, we've had, I've had other comments that weren't part of the, weren't part of the public meetings, people asking about it. And I said, there's going to be this, you know, potentially this walking path that'll serve. And, you know, people say this is be real benefit to have a really safe and beautiful place to walk in, in the area where they're, you know, otherwise you're walking along, you know, North Shore Trail, which is really not the best pedestrian environment.
Yes, my, my concern is that it's, so I'm glad there's an opportunity for us to get this trail, you know, regraded and re, re wood chipped, if that's a verb. But I, you know, as we think about ongoing maintenance of public land in the city, this one for me personally has been a little off radar. And if someone would have complained about, you know, the status of this, this trail that is our responsibility two years ago, I would have been a little flat footed and just, again, it's a little off radar for me. And so as we think about, you know, full 10 year plan and what does it mean to maintain all, all city parcels and all amenities on all city parcels, this does need to be on the list. That said, I'm happy that we've got an opportunity now to get it, you know, with this amenity into a more usable state, but just ongoing awareness, I guess, of council of our existing obligations out there. And then I also sense that there was feedback from the neighborhood meeting around ATV use, which I'm assuming is not allowed. And so I guess, is that, is that a correct statement? ATV use is not allowed on that trail?
Yeah, off-road vehicles aren't allowed in, in city, on city land, public lands without, unless it's, they're designated for that. And I think, you know, there's, it's just been, you know, there's been real no occupation of the land and it's, it's just been in this kind of, yeah, kind of a hidden area. I mean, it's not in some ways, it's, it's not increasing this, you know, creating new, a new responsibility for maintenance. It's always been there. It's just more of a reminder that it's there.
Mayor Bean, can I make a comment?
Please.
Um, so I attended the planning commission meeting and I know there was some question about the trail and Donovan, if I'm correct, you had said it will also be marked as public trail so that folks know that they can access that and use that. Cause I will say, living, it's where I live out here, there isn't a safe place to walk. So I definitely see that as a, as a benefit. But I, am I making that up or did you say there?
Yeah, no, I think it's, that's, that, that was something that I, I thought of, but didn't note within this preliminary review in the comment letter, but it'll certainly require that. And that was also a, it's a concern also for, to make sure people understand that where there's simply access easement on these two, the ends portions that are in that first edition of Forest Hills Farms, they're directing them to, you know, to stay where is, is a public trail, not to wander to where it is private. And that was a concern with the residents that the, the Lake Shore lot that they own, you know, that they, they commonly share, which is private property, you know, isn't trespassed upon. And so I think signage there will make it clear so that we can make sure people know where they can go and where they can't.
Is signage contemplated as part of this project?
I think it's, yeah, I think we'll make that requirement with the, the final beauty, final plat.
Because, yeah, I do think that's also important is just for both, for both the public using, but then also for peace of mind for those adjacent property owners that people know where they can be and they can't. Other questions for the, either staff or the development team? On overall, overall project, otherwise council, this is Resolution 01252102 and I believe it's on page 130 in your packet.
Mayor Bean, I move adoption of the findings of fact and Resolution 01-25-21-02, a resolution approving a preliminary plat and preliminary PUD for Forest Hills Farm Second Edition Planned Unit Development with the conditions as outlined by city staff.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Beistrum and a second from Councilmember Husnick. Any further discussion on this item?
I have one comment if I could.
Please, absolutely.
I know there's been some discussion about the name and, and Kelly, I think you were in that conversation, heard about that. I also spoke with Al and I have made the decision that I do think it would be beneficial. I, I heard enough, the only thing I've heard about this is that the first edition didn't want to have the second, the name of that first edition. So I, I am working with my team on, on renaming this, this second plat. And I, I have, I'm okay with that idea. So I just want you, you all to know that, that a, a new name will be forthcoming. And, you know, however, work that out legally with what the plat is called, but for marketing reasons and neighborhood reason, I have made the decision to, to call it a different name. And I think a lot of people will appreciate hearing that from what I heard in our first meeting. So.
Just process wise and for my own information, is that something that gets done as part of the final PUD that comes forward, next steps? Donovan, or is that technically where that fits?
I, this is something of a new one for me. The, the, I think it's appropriate to the, that the plat say Forest Hills Farms two, second or second edition, since it is, was originally, you know, made an outlaw of Forest Hills Farm. But I'm not sure if it's, the name is simply a marketing or whether the plat needs to think, but that will, 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 I think confer with Pete and Amanda to get that cleared up.
I was just going to say maybe an opportunity to, in this next round of discussions, to make sure everyone's on the same page of technically, what does that take to get that name changed everywhere where it needs to be? Very good. We have a motion on the table and a second. Any further discussion at this point? Karen Dunn, Karen, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick?
Aye.
Councilmember Munson?
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum?
Aye.
Councilmember Valento?
Aye.
Mayor Bean?
Aye. And motion approved. Good luck with your project. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. We are going to move on to liquor and tobacco compliance failures. We are going to have seven, seven separate public hearings to hear feedback on this topic. Before we start going down the list of public hearings and I'll, I'll list the order here. So if you are a member, actually, when we open up public hearing, Karen, maybe it's appropriate to let everybody technically into the Zoom meeting and then we will just coordinate and allow people to step forward individually. It just takes the, the technical element out of it here. Or the technology element out of it here. And, and we will hear first some opening comments from Karen, just overall on Karen, if you could just summarize your memo to council. And then we will open up public hearings in this order. We will hear the American Legion liquor license first. Famous Dave's BBQ second, Pizza Hut second, Liquor Works liquor licenses. I'm sorry, Pizza Hut third, Liquor Works liquor license fourth, Liquor Works off sale or tobacco fifth. Holiday Station Store number 130, number three, 11, sixth, and then Highway 61 stopping go seven. Does that sound okay? That'll be the order of our public hearings. Karen, do you just want to kick us off with some overall conversation?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Bean. So at the last meeting, we, these were separated out and just highlighted to bring council's attention to the fact that these haven't dropped off. We, we did have some compliance failure checks. At the last meeting, what we needed to do was approve their licenses for 2021. So that piece was taken care of. So everybody's operating. For this, for this part of this, we're looking at their compliance failures and that was back in For this, for this part of this, we're looking at their compliance failures and that was back in January thirteenth of twenty twenty. So um, we're looking at a little bit over a year ago. And at that point in time. The liquor licenses that you're, you're seeing here, the businesses that you're seeing here with liquor licenses. Had uh previous violations, two previous violations within a twenty-four month period. And the, the tobacco licenses, uh, the businesses with the tobacco licenses had one violation within a twenty-four month period. Um, when a. Liquor license holder has two violations within a twenty-four month period. What our ordinance says is that there is a thousand dollar fine and a one day suspension on their liquor license. Back when we were taking a look at this. Um, these were placed on hold, the tobacco license um or tobacco, and we had just changed the ordinance at that time. So it was new. Uh, but I believe for a um tobacco license, a one time violation in that twenty-four month period, I believe was a five hundred. And fifty dollar fine and a one day suspension on their license. Um, and so when we were taking a look at this back last year, of course, we were struck by the pandemic. And so we put this on hold. Um, this is now coming forward. For council review to make a decision on what we want to do about these compliance failures. Should note that in. Twenty twenty during the pandemic, some of these businesses were shut down for eighty-four days. So they did receive a refund on a portion of their twenty twenty license. Um, and some of these businesses were able to maintain business during that time. Um, so they didn't, uh, they weren't impacted necessarily by being completely shut down. Um, and so what uh place I'm at now is for recommendations, I'm basically deferring to council. To um. User discretion on what they want to do for these compliance check failures. I'm just taking a look at my notes here, what it says for tobacco license, the change on that. Um, we did make stiffer penalties when we redid that tobacco ordinance. So there's an additional um enforcement level on the tobacco. Administrative penalty, I'm, I'm reading what it says, uh, two, two penal, two, a minimum, two minimum penalty. It was a seven hundred fifty dollar fine and a. Uh, ten day license suspension. As per our code and then failure to pay that administrative penalty fine within thirty days. Would result in an additional ten day license suspension. So. Yeah, I'm, I'm open to answer questions. There's a lot, there's a lot of moving parts here. Um, so if council has any questions, I can certainly answer them. I do have several people who want to speak during their public hearings. I also have. An email from somebody who couldn't be here. Um, she wanted me to read her email. Um, and that was Liquor Works, so she had both the tobacco and the liquor license compliance failures. So any questions from council?
Thank you, Karen. And um, as we're thinking about sequencing next steps for the next meeting, um, I would recommend that we. Take each one individually, review the fact pattern for each one. Open up the public hearing, bring it back to council for a decision and then move on to the next. And so that there will be an opportunity in this next meeting to do a full review of facts of. What was the violation? What was the number of violations, discussion of penalty, public hearing and then a council conclusion, and then we'll move on to the next one. Tonight's a little bit different because we're not expecting to take action tonight. Um, that's the, the more broad opening discussion, but I would say that there's certainly opportunities if there's questions around facts around each of these individually. Um, we can certainly either take some of those questions tonight. Um, and also there's an opportunity um, next meeting as well as we sequence each one. Go through one step by step. Karen, go ahead.
And, and I would point council as well to um the information in your packet. I did supply um the alcohol compliance check forms for both um, for the liquor. Uh, failures, there was two for each of those and then the tobacco, there was one on each of those businesses. So those are included in here. Um, there's not tons of detail, but you can take a look and see, um, for example. What was sold, uh, description of the person that sold it. You know, sold either cigarettes or, or um alcohol. So that provides a little bit of detailed information and the number of violations, date, time.
Very good. Counsel, any specific questions at this time before we start opening up the public hearings? And we'll have opportunity after the public hearings as well if there's any additional questions. Alright, with that, Karen, do you want to let all participants into the meeting and then we'll walk through? And I'll review, once they're in, I'll review the list as well.
Yep, just moving everybody in here. That should be everybody moved into the meeting.
Very good.
Have the email from, um, we'll wait till we get to Liquor Works, but I do have an email to read for that.
Thank you, everybody for being here this evening. We are on the um alcohol and tobacco compliance check. Um, uh, discussion item on our agenda. Um, just a quick, I don't, couple of notes of logistics for this evening. Council is not expected to take action this evening. Um, we are expecting to bring this back at a future meeting, but because it was noticed as a public hearing. And we know some of you had planned to be here, we do want to provide an opportunity for you to speak. If you would like to come back when we do re-address this topic, um, you are welcome to also participate. There will be another round of public hearings for that. And if you are representing a license holder, you will be notified by staff of when that meeting is. Um, but again, wanted to be respectful of your time and certainly wanted to hear what's on your mind tonight. We are going to hold individual public hearings for each of the licenses. There will be seven tonight and I'll just list them in order. Um, when we get to the public hearing, if it is um the one that you would like to speak on. Um, please either just raise your hand if you're on video or use the raise hand function at the bottom of your Zoom tray. We'll acknowledge you. Welcome to hear your comments. Um, we'll hear all comments on that particular item. We'll close that public hearing for that business. And then we'll move on to the next one. So our order this evening is going to be in the following, the American Legion post two twenty-five liquor license. Famous Dave's BBQ Shack liquor license, Pizza Hut liquor license, Liquor Works liquor license. Liquor Works tobacco license, Holiday Station Store number three eleven. And then Highway sixty-one stop and go tobacco license. I'm sorry, the, the Holiday Station Store was a tobacco license as well. So that is the order. Any questions on logistics before we get started? Alright, Pete, we doing okay?
Yes, Your Honor.
Excellent. Alright, with that, I will open up the public hearing for the American Legion post two twenty-five liquor license. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this topic? Please either raise your hand. Vicky, glad you're here. Welcome. And you, there you go.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Um. So yeah, it's been a year. It's been a, a long year. So I just wanted to reiterate what had happened. And what um the American Legion did in finding out that the liquor license or our, there was a violation. I think it happened on January fourteenth with an employee. He did not pass, or the person did not pass a liquor sting. We had immediately suspended the person for thirty days to determine what we would be doing with the employee. And he was suspended till February thirteenth. Um, he, he was the one that had two liquor violations. Um, at that time, we immediately made sure all employees and servers were certified in the MLB a server training. Um, after the Eboard meeting, we did not have suitable employment for the employee, so he did not return to employment. Then um. We, of course, during COVID, we had shut down in June. And we had hired uh some new servers and immediately the first thing that they had to do before even serving or anything, part of the training. Was they had to get certified through the MLB a um server training. And then again, in December, just recently, we went through everything because we tried, we, we strive to comply with all state, county and city rules. Um, we try to instill that in all our employees too, we hire. So um, as they are a direct reflection of the American Legion. Post two-two-five. So in December, we did some more training and we also had some Eboard members. Certify in it and some other members so that they're aware what these employees have to do. So I just wanted to let you know what we have done since January when that happened. And I have Paul Petrie or Paul Seibert, my um first vice is on here.
Excellent. Welcome, Paul. Thank you for being here, Paul. Paul, anything that you wanted to address with council at this time?
No, I think Vicky stated it pretty well. That's pretty much the actions we've taken.
Okay. Thank you so much. Is there anybody else in attendance this evening that would like to speak on the American Legion post two twenty-five item? Not seeing any or hearing any, we will close the public hearing on that item. And we will open the public hearing for Famous Dave's BBQ Shack, the liquor license. Is there anybody that would like to speak on Famous Dave's? Pause just for a minute and see if anybody comes forward. Not seeing anybody, we will close the public hearing for Famous Dave's BBQ Shack. We will open the public hearing for Pizza Hut liquor license. Is there anybody that would like to speak for, on Pizza Hut? Alan, glad you're here. Thank you for being here.
You're welcome. Yeah, thank you for having me. Uh, yeah, I just wanted to kind of go over everything that happened. It was quite a while ago. Uh, we've taken steps, extra precaution now. What we're doing is we have basically daily meetings, weekly meetings, monthly meetings. Just kind of to discuss, you know, going over with all the employees, uh, the policies, how to card, the ID carding. We've added extra charts on there, you know, so you can check the ID and see that it says under twenty-one and look at that kind. To, to see that they're under twenty-one or over twenty-one. Also checking the back of the ID to see if there's any restrictions on the ID to make sure. I know some people have restrictions that they don't have alcohol that's available or that they're not allowed to drink. So. We make sure they check that and make sure they're following all policies. Also, we've told all the employees that if they're not sure, just not to serve. We'd rather just not serve the alcohol than if we're not sure that if they should or shouldn't have it. So we're taking every precaution possible. Unfortunately. The girl that sold it said she went to high school with this person and then I, which was not an excuse, you know, she has been trained properly and that. She's no longer with us anymore, but uh, it was one of those things she went up and did. I said, it doesn't matter if you know the person or you don't know the person. You need to take action and check the ID. I mean, that's just the rules, then everything needs to be followed. Uh, we do also have training on our Learning Zone or Serve Safe where everybody, all employees, they have to watch a. It's an alcohol training site, which is nice with pizza. They have training session just for alcohol now, whether, you know, if you think somebody's. Got, had too much alcohol, not to serve them if you, you know, and then how to check an ID, how to follow through. And it's really nice training that they have for that. But then we also make sure that uh, every employee, whether or not they do or don't serve alcohol, they know the rules. We've got, each day we talk to them. Like if I go in there and I talk to whoever's working, I'll say, okay, have you checked their, you know, have you, have you seen this chart? You know, how, how does it work? I just have them explain it to me. So I have multiple stores that I do work with and train on this kind of, this kind of issue. So I make sure that they're following the standards that need to be followed. And then also the new, we have a new manager there. She's been within the alcohol and food industry for about fifteen years. So she's been aware and she's taking classes and. Kind of doing, kind of doing what's needed and she's a really good trainer on that aspect. So. And then another step that they had taken was to actually check two ID, like if, you know, one person checks the ID and then another person checks it. So we're actually doing double checks just to make sure. You know, we want to take an extra step above and beyond to make sure this doesn't happen again. So we just kind of. Make sure that, but you know, and then we've got other, you know, policies, just making sure, you know. Everybody's aware of it. And if we hire somebody new, that's where we do all the different training and, you know, just keeping on top of it and making sure this doesn't happen again for everyone. That way people can still take advantage of having a beer and a pizza. So, no, thank you guys.
Thank you for, thank you for being here.
Appreciate it.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak on Pizza Hut this evening? Not seeing anyone else, we will close the public hearing for Pizza Hut. And we will open the public hearing for Liquor Works. The, let's talk about the liquor license first. We'll open up. The public hearing for the Liquor Works liquor license. Karen, go ahead. I think you're on mute. Karen, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. This is the one I'm going to read the um email on and I'm not entirely sure, I haven't read the full email. If it's in relation to their liquor license, their tobacco license or both. So um, this is from Beth Whitaker at Liquor Works. And she says, good evening, Karen. I was planning on joining in on the meeting tonight, but I now have to work at the store. I was hoping to let the council members know that the night of the compliance check, I had a new employee working for me. He had only been there for an hour on his first night. The employee that was training him went to use the bathroom right before the purchase took place. I know that if the employee would have been out there at the register, the new employee would have passed the check. I'm not sure if this will make a difference, but I was hoping to let the council know this information.
Thank you, Karen. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for Liquor Works, the liquor light, uh Liquor Works liquor license this evening? Not seeing any, we will close that public hearing and we will open the public hearing for Liquor Works tobacco license. And Karen, you did not have a second submission for that, right? It was just the one, okay.
Correct.
Any, anybody for the Liquor Works tobacco license? Not seeing anything come forward, we will close that public hearing and we will open the public hearing for Holiday Station Store three eleven tobacco license. Is there anybody that would like to speak on that topic? And give it just a moment. Holiday Station Store three eleven tobacco license. Not seeing anybody, we will close the public hearing for Holiday Station Store three eleven and we will open the. Um, public hearing for Highway sixty-one stop and go tobacco license. Anybody to speak on that topic? Is there anybody to speak on the Highway sixty-one stop and go? And Mr. Sharma, I think you might be on mute. Are you able to take yourself off mute?
Here, let me see if I can.
You're still on mute.
On mute. Let me see if I can remove.
The bottom left of your Zoom tray, you should be able to take yourself off.
Oh, yes, yes, I.
We can hear you. Welcome.
Good evening, council. And uh, I was just wanting, it's the first time I'm on a, a public hearing and this is a very good experience. Uh, as well listening to you guys as a council member and as well as. The defendant who were there, there are few of them, they, and I'm one of them. And in my case. I admitted myself uh in the county, uh, the county judge. And I'm already fined for that. I, I paid the fine and I'm like. If you check my record that I'm there for the last five years and. And most of the time, this is a family run store, so I don't have any employees. So whatever is. Uh, done is done by, either by the management or, or by the owner. So I was there. And that is my uh, simply that, that, that of my distraction. Actually, I was on the phone and the young man was there and I just did it and I just uh. Apologize to the officer who was accompanying him and this and that. But uh, as, as, if you consider that for the last five years, I, I'm given so many recommendations, so many certificates. Like I did a good job uh regarding the compliance. So in that case. I really apologize that I was not at the moment, that moment, part of the community to uh, apply the compliance. At the moment, that moment, part of the community to uh, apply the compliance. But I'm making sure in future it will be taken care of and. Uh, if you see my practice, I don't want to elaborate much, but I don't do this thing. Like I'm from New York and I'm very much aware of all this thing. And as my record in New York, being in New York, we're such a big city, I never had a ticket or something like that. And I'm doing this for the last twenty five years, this toast thing, but that is. That is my totally negligence or my distraction that day. I really apologize for that. But I will be really considering, like you see that this is the COVID time. And the businesses are very slow and this and that. And if you want to go to the higher punishment or something like that, if you want to revoke my lessons, if you want to suspend my lessons, this and. If you do it now, I will be more happy. If you want to take it to the next date and then maybe the things are getting a little better for the business, you understand what I mean? So that will be okay. But if given an apology. And given a chance not to do it in the next time or something, I assure myself. As you see, we, me and my wife, we are only two people who were there. And we, we follow the, all the rules and regulations. And we normally don't encourage, especially me and especially my wife, she's very. Careful, but like I said, I was on the phone and all of a sudden the guy came and the, I just put the pack on the counter. The sale was not complete even. I, I just put the pack on the counter, but it was considered so. I really apologize for that, but this was my little saying, I, I want to have the experience of the public hearing. How, how is like in the modern days is done. I really appreciate for your listening. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Is there anybody else that would like to speak to Highway sixty one stop and go? Not seeing any, we will close that public hearing and that is the end of our public hearing period. Um, just a quick note for those that attended the public hearing. Again, a reminder to my opening comments as we started to talk about this. Council is not going to be taking action this evening. Um, you will be invited to our follow up public hearing when um, that is on our next agenda. Um, you are welcome to attend that public hearing. Also though, note, we know your time is valuable and so your comments that are made here are in the public record. And will be available for council to consider at the next meeting as well. So you are welcome to be there, but again, please. Note that we have accepted your, your comments and those are on the record and noted. With that, we will bring the conversation back to council. And council, um, opportunity for questions, feedback. Um, and again, my recommendation would be that we would table, but I'll, I'm open to your feedback and questions until we get to that point. Pete, go ahead.
Your honor, members of council, because there will be a second public hearing after some further notice. Uh, I would recommend that uh, council avoid discussing um, what they might be wanting to do here. Uh, until after that second hearing. Uh, but if you have questions about, you know, the facts that you were presented or something like that, that makes sense, but. I would, I would be cautious about uh, beginning the conversation you would expect to have at the end of the hearings until the end of the second year.
That is good, council. Thank you, Pete. With that, council, Sam, go ahead.
Our based on is Pete's statement, I would make a motion that we table this till the next available meeting for the second public hearing.
There is a motion to table. Is there a second to table?
A second to table.
There is a motion and a second. There is no discussion on a table item. And so Karen, we will take a vote to table.
Councilmember Husnick. Councilmember Munson.
Hi.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Hi.
Councilmember Valento.
Hi.
Mayor Vane.
Okay, and item is tabled. Our next item on the agenda this evening is the twenty twenty one legal services contract. Patrick, are you walking us through this? Picking us off.
Yes, I am. Uh, in front of the council tonight is uh, a. Legal services contract, basically a renewal with our current firm. Um, you see, there's a really no major changes except the, a small increase in the, in the price of the hourly rate. Um, I recommend that the council approves it where it, where it's a five year period, I believe it was. And I, I recommend approval. We've been very satisfied with our legal representation. Uh, they work very close with staff and we think they do a good job. So recommend for approval.
Thank you, Patrick. Pete, anything further you would add for council's consideration at this time?
Um, your honor, council members, at this point, I'm taking off my hat as your lawyer. And only speaking to you as a vendor, which is kind of an awkward thing to say, uh, and I would. Uh, I would just say it's been a real privilege to, to serve the council and to work with staff and. Uh, we would hope for the opportunity to can continue to do that. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about our contract.
Very good. Thank you, Pete. Council, any questions for staff or Pete on this topic? Sam, go ahead.
What are these people? Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. I, I make a motion that we uh, renew the. Um, legal service contract with Lavander, Gillan and Miller PA. It's recommended by Patrick Casey.
There's a motion, is there a, a motion from councilmember Husnick and a second from councilmember Beistrum? Any further discussion? I will just, just note, appreciate the service we received both from Pete and Amanda, but then also the depth of bench she brought to the table as needed. Um, so much appreciated. I will support, gladly support the action this evening.
And I, and I really appreciate the hard work too. Thank you.
With that, Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick.
Hi.
Councilmember Munson.
Hi.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Hi.
Councilmember Valento.
Hi.
Mayor Vane.
Hi, motion approved. Our next item this evening is um, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two sanitary sewer lining project. Ryan, I believe you're taking us through this.
Mayor City Council and your packet is the request to authorize preparation of plans of specification for the two thousand twenty one, twenty two sanitary sewer lining project. Uh, work is identified in the capital improvement plan. Reason why we have the heading two thousand twenty one, twenty two is because of Wednesday, we'll jump on informational meeting with the Met Council with the next up and coming inflow infiltration. Uh, grants. Where we last did these lining projects in two thousand fourteen. And mirrored that with the grants that came uh, at the same time with that. So basically, uh, how that worked back in two thousand fourteen is, you know, the more linear foot we did, you got a certain percent of credits. Um, back after you, if you followed all the rules and requirements that they required in the bid process and we. We follow those rules already, so. It's kind of a no brainer not to apply for this grant again, and it just so happens to line up with how we identified in the CIP. We'll also. Uh, add into the, anything we can with the lift station projects. We already had some specific questions into that informational meeting. That will be authorized in plans and specs later this spring. For that project and some sewer replacement with some of the street work coming up in uh, that timeframe too. So. Another reason with the flexible schedule of twenty one, twenty two is we'll allow contractors when it fits their schedule. This is a very competitive markets. Um, more flexibility, we allow in a contract like this, where they typically like to do it in winter time, other than when it's zero degrees. Uh, they can do this. It's all trenchless technology. So um, the only thing that we have is a few things at each manhole in the road while they're doing the work. So. Also in the packets is a tentative schedule that's uh, we would follow with the bid of this project. Not really much fancy stuff to this work. Uh, in fourteen, when we did this area, uh, we also saw a very significant reduction in the sewer lift station. Flow meters. Our works could comment on that if they have anything else to say, but tonight we're here just for the request to. Authorize preparation of plans and specification for the two thousand twenty one, twenty two sanitary sewer lining project is identified in the capital improvement plan.
Thank you, Ryan. Council, what questions do we have of Ryan? Not hearing any. Entertain a motion. And Ryan's recommendation letter is on page one sixty five of our packet. And Sam, go ahead.
Yeah, and I may already make a motion that we authorize the preparation uh, plans and specifications for the. Project sewer project as mentioned by Ryan.
A motion, is there a second?
A second.
The motion from councilmember Husnick and a second from councilmember Munson. Any, any discussion on this topic? Seeing none, uh, Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick.
Hi.
Councilmember Munson.
Hi.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Hi.
Councilmember Valento.
Hi.
Mayor Vane.
Hi, and motion approves, approved. Our next item on this, on the agenda this evening is the gravel road assessment policy. And Patrick, are you walking us through this?
Yeah, um, if you all recall last, at the workshop on last Tuesday, we represented the gravel road. Uh, paving policy, uh, outlining the change and the creation of a commercial uh, business district. That call would call for um, a twenty percent um, matched by the local property owners. And eighty percent uh, contribution by the city to pave gravel roads within this district. Uh, we had a very short discussion and uh, there is a request for a map to be provided about gravel roads. We forwarded that. To the council uh, the next day, I believe. And we were trying to get uh, this either approved or not approved tonight, so we can continue and move on with. The two thousand and twenty one street paving project. Um, there, if we approve this particular one, we will include that in the bid. Uh, if we do not include this, uh, and we don't settle this, we will just add the three, three additional streets. That we've planned for instead. So we're asking for a discussion and approval or direction on which way we're going to go with this.
Thank you, Patrick. Council, open it up for questions, discussion, topics. Councilmember Beistrum, go ahead.
Yep, um, I, I don't. Uh, contrary to what some people think, I, I believe, I am not opposed to this at all. Um, I'm concerned about where it's landing within this policy. Um, my concern lies in. Is, is this reduction to twenty percent going to be consistent from this point forward? And if it is, shouldn't we be considering a similar reduction? In the construction of new commercial industrial by two minutes surface streets as well?
Well, let me, let me try to answer that and, and Ryan can chime in when he thinks I'm going off course here, but. As far as the new policy goes, the twenty percent, if we were to pass this policy, would apply to any of the. The remaining gravel roads outlined in the, the district. Um, as far as other roads, commercial roads, if you're talking about brand new roads and new development. And it has always been the city's policy that the developer pays for one hundred percent of those costs. So I'm not sure if that's what you're talking about, or you're talking about, since we only have a couple gravel roads in this area. Uh, that's the only place this will apply. Are the other commercial areas you're talking about beyond brand new ones that? I just kind of need a clarification.
And, and I think, and I think that is my concern. I mean, I, it, I mean, if, if we were to need to reference. This policy again, in a different set of circumstances, we now have it written in policy that we're at twenty percent. So wouldn't it make more sense to have? To amend this policy around, you know, with a different title by two minutes surfacing of existing commercial industrial and business district. Gravel roads, for example. I mean, I'm just, you know, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that language. I just, I, I feel like it, we, this. Changing the percentage here is a little bit of a slippery slope. When I mentioned the slippery slope last, last meeting, that's what I meant. Um, it, it feels like that's not the place to be doing this. I, I have long term concerns about that.
Yeah, and just to clarify, we are only changing uh, the policy for a newly created. Uh, commercial business district, which we have not had in the past. Which is outlined in the, the information sent. Uh, that I basically believe has two gravel roads and one of those being Fifth Avenue.
Councilmember Beistrum, is your question around? The difference between the commercial district versus all? The commer- the, the downtown commercial district versus all commercial areas. Is that part of your? Is that, is that your concern, that, the, the, the difference?
My, my concern is. My cons- my concern is the twenty percent written into policy. When there is a possibility, we would need to assess at a rate of a hundred percent. And at another point in time down the road.
And. And when you say assess at another point in time down the road, are you referring to within that commercial district? Or are you? So are you, are you talking about a significant redevelopment effort downtown? Is that what you're referring to?
Potentially. I mean, I'm not exactly sure what that would look like. I don't have a crystal ball. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to think ahead about a policy change that could get us in, get us into trouble. At some point down the road. And I'm equally concerned about the inconsistency between the commercial business district. And the commercial industrial. The, the hundred percent is still in the commercial industrial and the twenty percent in the. I, I, I'm not arguing that we should get this done. We should get this done. There's, that's, that's, I, I agree with that wholeheartedly. I'm just concerned about. Modifying this policy in this way.
Madam Mayor, can I ask a question?
Please.
Sure. So I um, I too think it's crazy that we have gravel roads. Where they are in the commercial district. Are, is there a way to, to? So I think what I'm hearing Commissioner Beistrum say is um, councilmember Beistrum is. It's too much of a blanket policy and we need to, is there a way to name specifically where we want to do this, or is that getting too much in the?
I, I think that's what we are attempting to do here. Prior to this suggested change. Uh, the construction of, and, and correct me, Ryan, if I'm wrong, the construction of any brand new road. Whether it was gravel or whether it was dirt or whatever the case may be, was assessed at a hundred percent. Whether it was downtown, whether it was out in the sticks, whether it was anywhere. So what this does, it, it. Outlines the area of our commercial district, our current commercial district. Indicated by, by the map that we provided or the, the outline that we provided and limits the twenty percent. Cost of improvement, eighty percent share by the city to that area only. Um, if we were to say have a downtown reconstruction or other reconstruction. The policy also, um, I believe states that the reconstruction of a commercial zone, zone, zones, I think. Uh, shall be assessed at twenty percent. I think that's what the policy says.
And that's in policy today, correct? That a reconstruction, so if we had a, let's just throw an example on the table. For discussion purposes, if we had a significant redevelopment effort downtown that required the reconstruction. Today's policy would say that that's an eighty, twenty split, right?
Yeah, and, and I'm looking at it and it says the reconstructions of streets. In the commercial industrial zoning districts as identified by the comprehensive plan will be assigned the rate, assessed, I'm sorry, at the rate of twenty percent. Of the cost improvements to the benefiting properties of frontage and so forth. So, yeah.
So your most recent example of that was Fifteenth Street Southwest, where it was an existing by two minutes roadway. City came in, reconstructed it to what it is up there today. And it was ba- and it was assessed for a front footage basis with the commercial property. So we went through the full four twenty nine process. Uh, previously, it was up for. So went through the full four twenty-nine process. Uh, previously it was up for reconstruction in two thousand and nine. That's when, from whole long story, probably don't want to get into tonight, but. Whether they evolved to the assessment policy that they currently have today. Therefore, then the property owners along Fifteenth were much more favorable moving forward on the project because previously they were going to be assessed seventy percent.
So what were to happen if somewhere down the road, we ran a new road through? Some area of, of the downtown commercial business district?
First, you'll have to go through appraisals and purchase properties if we're realigning roads in the downtown district. That'll be a significant undertaking environmentally and zoning and planning wise. Uh, we did do concepts and cost estimates of that several years ago, but now with Cherrywood Point. The news, uh, Lighthouse Loft sites, the expansion, uh, water treatment plants. The redevelopments in the Tiff district created south of Wells Fargo, you're pretty much going to be where your road alignments are today. Cause I think you. Were you talking about the split pair? Is that what, what question kind of you're thinking about in the back of your head?
I, I just, I, I'm just trying to anticipate. A possibility that, you know.
You would have a massive land acquisition problem. That's way outside of what we're talking about tonight.
I'm, I'm just trying to anticipate the potential that this could get somebody into trouble. Maybe not us, maybe not me as a council member. But that this could get somebody into trouble at some point down the road. I don't.
Can, can I make a comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, you had your hand up earlier and I, yes, absolutely. Council member Valento, please.
Thanks. Um, I agree with council member Beistrom. Um, and when she talks about slippery slope. I'm concerned with kind of naming a street and dropping it to twenty percent. And then what would not force other areas and other property owners to become enraged? That theirs is at a hundred percent and they didn't get dropped to twenty percent. So I think there's, we need more time to go through this. I mean, who, who wants gravel roads where they are? Um, that needs to be changed. But I think it's more important to take a step back and get community, um, input. And make sure we're not stepping on any toes and kind of making sure we're not, um. Giving, I guess, like handouts. Um, because at that point, if you're dropping it to twenty percent. That's a significant burden put on the city, um, and less of a burden put on the property owner. Um, and that's concerning to me.
Other comments, questions? I guess, um. I, so I, I, I start with the foundation that for existing, for existing infrastructure. That, that should be the city's responsibility, that that is part of our commitment to the community for existing infrastructure. And whi, which is why I appreciate that if we, we have in our existing commercial district. If we have a significant reconstruction where we are making significant upgrades like we did with Fifteenth. Where we're, you know, expanding the street significantly and we're, you know, changing that, that we, we recognize it's a significant change. And we partner with the, with the, um, property owners on an eighty-twenty split. And it also recognizes that we are a growing community and we aren't going to get the growth that we want and that developers want. If we are limited by our capacity to grow from a city. And so at that point, when we're talking about new, I've supported that that should be a hundred percent part of the development. Where I struggle where it relates to these gravel roads is there are areas of the city that I think in our commercial district is one of them. That it's just been skipped and it should have been done twenty years ago. And so I would also say that there are other commercial areas that are today gravel roads. That probably should not be. And that should be part of our challenge as we're working through the ten-year plan. Um, there's some sequencing, I think, and I think, you know, Ryan talks about good view circle. That there isn't city sewer and water out there yet. And so it probably doesn't quite make sense in the development cycle. To have a paved street. You'd want sewer and water to go in at the same time. So I think in some of our outlying areas, there are some good reasons on why we haven't changed the paving policy yet. To incent that development. Um, but I look at, there are some areas where we should be able to agree. And there is a, a current case to be made for what should have been done twenty years ago. Um, but I appreciate also that it is a slippery slope and it, and we have to be careful in that. We are, um, committing to what we can financially commit to. But, you know, if I'm a, if, uh, my message to those business owners that are sitting out in some of those industrial districts. That needs to be paved. Why want that to be paved too? We just need to work that into the plan when we can, when it makes sense and when we're able to financially make that commitment. I think that's larger than what we're prepared to do tonight, but I also don't want to do another paving cycle. We just did every street but Fifth Avenue in that area. I'd love to be able to come back and get that right this time. Without skipping it for what's another, you know, another cycle and another tough conversation. So I think this is not the final answer. I think this is the evolution of what needs to happen for, again. Existing infrastructure, whether that's a gravel road or whether that's a paved road. And what's our future commitment for those streets and how we maintain it?
I, I don't disagree with that at all. Not, not, this is, this is more about writing something into policy. That could come back to some, on somebody at some point down the road. And, 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 and should it, and should it land here? I, I, um, and then my, my second question is, you know, if, if we're dropping. If we're dropping the construction of new commercial business district by two minutes surface streets down to twenty percent. Um, and that's going to be a permanent part of policy. Why aren't we dropping the construction of the new commercial industrial by two minutes surface streets down to twenty percent as well?
Well, then, then you start to still have the same argument where we require residential, brand new residential streets at one hundred percent. So that you, what you're doing is getting into policy cul-de-sac, we go around and round. Because now you, you change a commercial, brand new commercial industrial, say somewhere in Headwaters, we have brand new ones or something. And that is coming from a dirt road, then you're, then you're saying, okay, well, we'll guarantee eighty percent of the cost of that. Then what stops the residential developers to saying, well, we're putting in residential roads, we should be paying eighty percent of that as well, so.
I, I think you're making my point for me, Patrick.
I, I know, I know, but I mean, it's, it is. I'm not saying slippery, so I'm saying you're getting yourself in a circle because you're starting to look at the entire policy. You know, it would be real easy if everything was a hundred percent flooded, that's all you're going to get. Or everything was fifty percent or everything was whatever. But right now, the way the council has in the past. And it makes perfect sense on brand new roads because they're not existing now. There's no infrastructure underneath them gravel. There's gravel, there's no water, there's no tour, there's nothing. Whereas new commercial or residential developments, they're having to start from scratch. Put the, you know, the, the stone and the pipes and everything, and that makes sense to be a hundred percent. Because the developer is the one making the money on whatever that development. And if they're not making money, they won't develop it. So that's just my two cents.
And it's the unique opportunity to build those costs into the cost of the development, those, that neighborhood that's going to benefit from those streets.
It's a direct, it's a direct cost to that neighborhood.
Right. Council member Hesnick, you've had your hand up and I'm not ignoring you, go ahead.
Thank you. I, you know, it, to me, it's kind of, it's, maybe I'm too simple minded, but, uh, it's the, really the difference between a rebuild and a build. That's really what it amounts to. You know, we do, we've gone over several streets and do whatever to maintain what's already there. We've, and, you know, I guess most of them have been a twenty percent policy. It's a lot different than what Patrick just talked about in a development, you know, where you're putting in a whole infrastructure. That's a big deal and it has to be part of that development. But it's, it's not the same, same thing. So as far as I, I mean. I don't see anything wrong with the policy the way it's written. I'm not afraid of the way that, the way it's written. So, my two cents.
You know, I, you know, council member Beistrom, you asked the question about why wouldn't we change the policy for the, all commercial industrial? Why are we just carving out this district? And, um, I guess I'm of the opinion that that's a conversation for another day. Um, that, that, that there are some considerations on some of those streets that we need to be aware of, of. You know, which would, which would likely, um, you know, redevelop faster if we were to change that policy. And is that a good thing given where we are with sewer and water and some other considerations? Um, and I also recognize that this is a big enough conversation that I'm not sure. I, I, I'm a little concerned that it's going to be a long time for council to be in a position to have perfect alignment. With all of the commercial districts and residential and, um, and so I'm, I guess I would advocate for some incremental change. Um, on some areas where we can, you know, comfortably identify, here's what our commitment is. Um, and I feel like we're at that spot there and I think it's just a question of, is that enough to take action or do we need some broader context? So.
No, I, I don't, I don't want to bog this down. I mean, I'm, I'm in one hundred percent agreement that it should get done. I'm just, I'm just looking at this through, I, 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 I think, I think we are on the same. We're, we're headed to the same destination. I just would like, I, I would like to see a different path. You know, to that destination. I just, I feel like this is, I'm just, I'm just uncomfortable with the way this is written. But, you know, I probably won't be here twelve years from now to have to deal with it. So if it comes up again, you know, somewhere down the road. So I, I don't want to bog it down, you know. With the language. I just, I'm, I'm concerned about that, so.
Yeah. I guess I would ask the question back to staff, you know, to that concern. Is there an opportunity for us, we're going to talk about the ten-year plan tonight, um. Is there an opportunity for us to talk about as part of the build out on that ten-year plan? Um. Some additional, so those, those streets that are outside of the planned district for tonight. Um, that are commercial or industrial, is there some, is it, is there opportunity to work some of that in? Or are we so overcapacity tenure plan that it's, it's, it's not in there?
Uh, to be quite honest with you, if you talk about brand new commercial and industrial construction.
Not brand new, existing gravel, like good view.
Well, existing gravel, but that's a brand new road, whether it's, whether it's a brand new place or it's gravel. Um, our streets are in pretty poor condition. I think we came back and showed you an indication of, on a scale of one to ten, what they look like. In order just to get the paved streets to someplace where they are in good shape, average shape. We are, you know, we're talking about the ten-year plan in a minute here, but. You saw some of the early figures on the ten-year plan and what that might take to get us to where we think we might need to get. And I can't, I can't recommend making any changes on gra, uh, any other gravel roads. In the town, in the city, uh, you know, because you start fooling around with commercial industrial gravel roads. And then we have residential gravel roads and. Yeah, I, I, we just got, we've got so much needed to be done. I don't know how we would do it.
You know, so, some other things just to consider is. When you, when you look at the overall map where a lot of your major stretches of gravel road still exist. Those are all within your new approved MUSA boundary that was, uh, re, revised during your last comp plan process. So that therefore now opens the floodgates of where development can go at the density the Met Council allows. So also in that area, we already are seeing applications, uh, starting to extend in that area. And if you're familiar with your future land use plan, is much different than what you have today. Like very significant different. I mean, there was a hundred and eighty degree turn on your future land use plan. So when you start talking south part of town, that's all commercial or, uh, you know, land based like that. Versus before, it was all residential. You only were expecting residential to grow to the south. That did a hundred and eighty degree change. And obviously that area has no infrastructure, no ponding, uh, infrastructure. Uh, sewer and water won't be down there in ten, maybe even not even twenty years down to the south end of the city. You know, that's all outlined in your staging plan too and your comp plan, so. When we get down. Those areas of those outskirts of town and start filling in with developments, you know, Forest Lakes are relatively young community. Lots of potential development still after the merger of the township, uh, on the thirty-five interstate corridor, you know. You still got Blaine and Hugo and White Bear even, you know, still developing, but as that stuff keeps pushing forward. We'll continue to slowly fill in those gaps, which will make these conversations in the future easier for you guys. Because you'll have less lineal feet to deal, deal with and or. What, I mean, right now, because if you blanketed everything down the south part of the town, I would say that's very expensive. But also then you're kind of controlling where roadways are going to go without the developer being able to lay out the land or readjust some of these gravel roads. Because basically how a gravel road was built, they excavate the ditch, so all the clay, pore soils are thrown up in the middle of the road. Shaped it and threw some class five on it. And that's why they get so spongy in the spring because of the freeze thaw cycles. And why out in those areas, the assessment is at a hundred percent, uh, one because. It's not ready for expansion to developments until these aren't there. And you're basically going to have to start from scratch and build a whole new full road section anyways, so. There's just a lot of limiting things when you get farther out and you should be familiar with your future land use map as it's changed significantly south of Headwaters Parkway.
Yeah, there is a lot of, there is a, that new land use map does have a lot of that converting to commercial industrial. Council, additional questions or any action we would like to take this evening?
Mayor Bain, are we, we're looking to approve tonight the gravel road assessment policy, correct? Just want to clarify.
Is I, is I understand, um, as I understand the time, part of the timing is. Um, the consideration of this particular project. Um, and when plans and specs would come back from Ryan, which is a very, Ryan, are you bringing that back at the next council meeting?
Uh, no. If fifths included, I'll need the time to engage the property owners, the one, make sure they'll. Cause we're not going to have enough time to go through the four twenty-nine process. They're going to have to sign a waiver to forego that process. If they're interested and want the project to move forward, uh, so we would need them to sign off on that. Then therefore then we could come back in the second meeting in February to approve plans and specs. I mean, if tomorrow, if they sign the dotted line, yeah, I could, I could get there. But I just, I'm expecting, because of economic times, that I'm going to have some difficult conversations with some of the property owners. Maybe, maybe they can't do this right now, or. But, or, you know, instead of, some of them could pay cash, could pay right, right away, they can, uh. Heck, I can't ever remember this lately. Uh, s, s, how do you assess it to their taxes? Uh, what's the word I'm looking for? At what term you guys decide and what interest rate? That's, that's what this would all. So if they don't pay right away, but they, they got to sign the waiver to move forward, that they're going to acknowledge this is the maximum dollar amount. I could be assessed. And yes, we want to go forward, hopefully get some better bids. And then you can adjust it accordingly with the unit pricing. And that's what would be required at payments day one, or they would have until. The next time you gotta assign it to their taxes. And then typically it's ten-year term. Sometimes it's fifteen, but I would recommend a ten-year term and you have to decide the interest rate. And they can always prepay it. So if they all of a sudden had a really good year in business, they could pay it off early. And they can always prepay it. So if they all of a sudden had a really good year in business, they could pay it off early. Certified to their taxes. Is that what Pete said?
We certify to the assessor and then essentially levy on their taxes and they'll pay off with their annual property taxes. Yeah. As Ryan was explaining.
And typically in the, in the event a property sold, it's negotiated that the seller will clear the assessments on the property, you know, that's all negotiable, but that is, you know, some, some, uh, frequent question.
So given that, given that, oh, Councilmember Valento, go ahead.
So, uh, question for Ryan. If we are giving the property owners one option and making them sign a dotted line, what would happen if this policy did get passed? What would happen if even one property owner didn't sign? And then how would the road move forward?
That would be a city attorney question.
You, usually I believe that you have to have 100% agreement. I don't think, I don't think if one property owner, I think it's good policy. If you don't have all the property owners in this particular case, because there's so few of them, I don't think the road would move forward.
If you didn't go through the 429 process, that would be my recommendation, but legally I don't know what the correct answer is.
Your honor, members of council, council member Valento, if you don't have 100% buy-in, you do have to use the 429 process. Have an improvement hearing, approve that by a four fifths majority vote in order to move forward with the project with the authority to assess.
And, and if, if, if that's the case, if one owner refused, then we had to go through 429, that means the road gets delayed until 2022.
And does that mean that if it would get passed through the four fifths vote, that the property owner who didn't sign would still have to pay?
Yes.
So they'd be forced to pay, even though they couldn't afford it?
Yes. And it wouldn't happen again. Being that if we had to go through that process, there's no way we could include it in the 21 road project. We'd have to go to 2022.
Your honor.
Good. Go ahead.
Your honor, council member Valento, the, the way that the property assessments work, there is a ceiling on what those assessments are regardless of what our policy says. We use the policy to establish the assessments, but at the end of the day, we're never allowed to levy an assessment that is more than the amount by which our, our new project increased the market value of their property. Uh, and so we are enriching their property value uh, and charging them some portion of the cost of, of accomplishing that. Uh, and if they, if they have trouble affording that on their property taxes, you're right, that can be, that can be a tipping point, perhaps in a very extreme circumstance, but uh, I've, I've, I've not seen it happen that way. But there is a tie in between their, what they're getting assessed and what we are doing for them on a pure economic level.
Another question.
Please.
Maybe Ryan already mentioned it, but does anyone know for a fact if every single property owner is willing to sign?
The last conversation I've had with the property owners, I believe it was at City Hall before COVID. All of them were in favor of it and wanted to see where the 20% would come in. Other than the very northwest parcel, which is open vacant land owned by, I believe, an elderly couple. But the property owners on the south said they were willing to help out that property owner to make the project move forward.
This, um, two, one, one, um, question of process, confirmation of process, and then just a, a comment from me on this kind of just this line. Or kind of where this conversation has turned. So I want to make sure that if, if all of those waivers are not signed and if we are going to go through an assessment process, council does have another opportunity to pull back from a project. We aren't committing ourselves by approving this to this policy change tonight to the paving of a project. There is a, a series of approvals that are still needed, A, on the project itself, but B, also on the assessment plan related to that project. Is that right? That we have that, that we still have that opportunity to make separate decisions?
Yes, you still have, like you said, the assessment, but you also have the approval of the plans and specs that will or will not include the road.
Yeah. I, I look at our decision tonight as a, what is our, from a policy level, what is our policy overall on this district? Um, and not so much project base. Yes, it's coming to the table because of an opportunity for a project. But I would, you know, I feel like, I feel, I, I'm only able to speak for my vote on council and council is only able to speak to council. There's a whole, you know, a number of property owners that also need to come to the table and reaffirm their commitment. And I think us changing the policy tonight is just saying we are willing to have this project move forward. They may or may not come, they, they may or may not decide it's the right time for them, and those are individual decisions they make. Um, I think in supporting this tonight, I'm just supporting that we are open to a new policy that would allow potentially a project to happen.
Mayor Bain, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to approve, um, the gravel road assessment policy. I don't have the specific numbers in front of me.
I'll second it, Mar.
We have a motion from council member Munson and a second from council member Husnick. Further discussion? I will just acknowledge the conversation we've had so far and that this is, we, we need to continue to evolve this. Um, and we need to continue to be thoughtful on what is our plan. But I do think that we have an opportunity to correct a small section of our community. Um, and I think that for that reason, I'll support this tonight. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick?
Aye.
Councilmember Munson?
Aye.
Councilmember Vice.
Aye.
Councilmember Valento?
Nay.
Councilmember, uh, Mayor Bain?
Aye. Motion approved. That ends our, um, action item, our action agenda for this evening. We do have one item for discussion purposes, and that is a revisit of the 10 year comprehensive plan update. Patrick, do you want to walk us through this?
I will. I, I didn't present anything or put it in the packet, but I'm, uh, we had a conversation again last time regarding uh, where we should be going with the 10 year plan and what your concerns might be. So just to have the discussion about what I believe, how we should move this forward and what the next step should be. I'm considering, I, I think we should go back to Ellers and ask them for some alternatives to what we presented the first time. And B, I think we should include some of the placeholders that the park committee requested. With those two things in mind, once we have the placeholders, uh, in place for the parks and if there's anything else that comes up, then we'll be able to talk to Ellers about a different way to structure the 10 year plan. Do we need to go out to a 15 year plan, a 20 year plan, a 25 year plan, a 30 year plan? Should we consider front loading a lot of this because of interest rates? I mean, interest rates are still historically low. Should we be looking at a major bond issue way up in front to take some of the pressure off the back end of this? So we'll be asking to sit down with Ellers and make some of those considerations. Again, we have such high demand for our capital improvement needs, whether it's the roads, whether it's future buildings, whether it's current buildings, whether it's the park system, whether it's the golf course, whatever the case may be, that the way it was presented, there's no way I believe that council would ever approve that kind of a raises in taxes and, and structure. So I propose that we go back to Ellers, see what other kind of alternatives we can come up with as far as the staging of those projects, whether it's like I said, upfront loaded or it's spaced out a little bit longer and see what we come up with and have them come back and present that to the council. So yeah, I would like your input, uh, based on what you've seen so far and any, if you have ideas of what we should be looking at.
I think that makes sense for a variety of reasons and, um, I, I think it's, it's been a while, first of all, since we've discussed this and it would be nice to have a refresh, but I, I think about council member Valento who is just coming into this, you know, without a, a body of knowledge, and I think that would be helpful. I think the other piece for me is, I'd also like to somehow kind of map out a vision for staffing. I don't know. I mean, I know we've, I know we've got a PD, we need a succession plan for. I know, I know when you did a survey of staff, Patrick, you had a pretty long list, you know, what does that look like and why? So, you know, just to take a look at that along with, you know, those capital needs as well. So.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think we can provide the staffing pretty quickly. You know, in a, in a staffing proposal, you know, I would, I would recommend not going out too far with that because of the way things change. You're probably looking at a five year plan on staffing, what if, what kind of staffing we need, where's the short calls and how we get there. So that's an easy part. I can probably tell you that off the top of my head if I wanted to, but I will wait.
Yeah. Again, it's difficult to have a crystal ball. We don't know where things are going, you know, three, four, five years out, but I think we, at least we can, we can take a look at it.
Yeah, there are some, there are still some, uh, real needs and, and as far as staffing wise goes in this organization. You know, I sent you all an email regarding one of those and what we needed to do last week. Uh, and we plan to move forward with that, but there's, there's at least two or three very critical staffings that we probably should take a hard look at in the next five, three years or maybe even two.
And I think that just paints a much more comprehensive picture for us.
Yeah, I agree.
As we're trying to make these decisions. So.
I agree.
Two things come to mind. One is there are some projects listed on the plan where some additional definition would be helpful. And I know it's come up a couple of times in community conversations. You know, exploration of a second fire station, for example, jumps to mind. Other, I know, once we get the park plan in, some additional definition around what do some of those details look like? So just some kind of a high level tour of projects, if you will, um, would be helpful. But then also staff's, um, pri, staff's priorities from a staff perspective, what are the rocks that can't move? Like what, what is a, these have to happen in this sequence versus I think some of these items fit in place because they fit in place and what, what's movable and what isn't, I think would give us some good guideposts.
Yeah, I think, I think that's absolutely correct. We know there's, uh, uh, certain things in the utility, water utilities, sewer utilities that can't move that, that we have to address. But how we stage the roads or when we build a building or if we build a building or if we, you know, expand some other thing, those we can explain.
And then, uh, uh, go ahead.
I, and I would say, and if we were to front load this in some way, because we know money is pretty cheap right now, what would that look like? I mean, what is, what would the plan be? What would those dollars look like and what would the plan for those dollars be?
Yeah, that, that's, that's the large one is if we front loaded, how much do we front load it? What is, how much do we need? What does that do to the debt service? How does that fit in? And how does that alter the, the 20, you know, the next 30 years really? I mean, if you're talking about roads. So yeah, those, that's, those are big items.
Agree. Other questions or kind of comments around process for 10 year, next steps 10 year plan? I suspect the 10 year plan becomes 15 to 20 years. But I think this next process that we've talked about will help to kind of us to sequence. And then what we haven't done, you know, this has been a process of, you know, getting the inventory out there. What we haven't spent a lot of time in is the prioritization or sequencing or the gut check of for each of those, you know, projected levy amounts each year, what are we comfortable with?
Yeah. And, and I think it's a good point that we need to explain some of the projects a little better. I mean, when we talk about a fire station that was thrown in because we have, if we're building a building, should we consider possibility of adding a fire station for the future instead of one where, you know, it might be more cost efficient to at least build the space, not house it, but to build the space. So those are some of the, the discussions you should have.
Washington County introduced us to the topic of road diet. So maybe this is 10 year plan diet, right?
And to be honest, the, the road plan, uh, that gets mapped out probably longer than 10 years, probably closer to 20 to 25, but we'll see how that lays out. And like you said, how the, how the taxes and the bondings work.
Right.
And just to, just to note, uh, I was going to do this in my report, but we've been notified by Representative Detmer that there's going to start solicitations in May and June for the 2022 bonding period. So if you all recall, we got funded, uh, in the last bonding and for the first time submission we ever submitted. So we're right back in that cycle again, where we're going to come to council and say, here's what we recommend you asking. We ask for it at the state and I think we now have a better idea of what kind of projects qualify for those those dollars and it really wa, wastewater, water, those kinds of things are really attractive ones. And so we'll, we'll gather as a staff and, and make some recommendations to you so that we can get that submitted sometime in early May or June.
Very good. Council, any further requests or thoughts on this? Patrick, do you have what you need of us?
I do, I do. Uh, but you know, we're, it's going to be a long, we're still in a long period for this. So you know, but I think it's good that we're working through this and slowly and carefully. And so everybody understands where we're going.
Yes. I, I would amend slowly and carefully with, um, also enough of a picture of what we need to do for the 2022 budget, which is going to get cranked up here sooner than we think. So.
Yep. Yep.
Very good. Let's move on to staff updates. Um, let's start with Patrick and then go to Dan.
Yeah, I already mentioned the bonding bill. We had a meeting with the senior board last week to continue to talk about transitioning that process in-house to, to somebody new. Uh, I, I corresponded with, with the council regarding the utility billing and the system and beginning steps on possibly bringing that back into house to operate. Uh, we will, you will be seeing more of that as the weeks go by here, as we know more. We have been talking to For Some Golf about a renewal of the golf course. We, we haven't, we've got still are negotiating. So there's really nothing to report there yet. And we will be talking to the restaurant regarding the parking situation and where we want to go as soon as that's kind of all one piece. And then I already talked to you about the bonding bill. So I think that's all I have.
Very good. Patrick, or any, any questions for Patrick? All right, we'll move to Dan and Chief Peterson after Dan.
Uh, I have no updates unless you have questions for me.
Dan, so how did the, um, second, so, um, EDA heard pre, or the EDA downtown working group heard presentations from the downtown planners that were proposed, two downtown planners that were proposing on our RFP. How did the second conversation go?
Uh, it got abruptly cut short, um, due to the fact that when we cut meetings, Zoom kicked us all out. I, I tried to start a second meeting. I got a portion of that group back in. They did a little bit of a wrap up, um, but it was not the full group that was in the first meeting. So we did not have any kind of after, after consultants left discussion. So I'll move that to the next EDA meeting agenda and front load that with that conversation there. But unfortunately, everybody got kicked out again. So Zoom technology issues happened.
Can you send our apologies to the Cunningham group who's was, they were virtually done, but we didn't get a very nice conclusion.
I was actually able to meet with them. They were in there, they were in the meeting. They joined right back. I was able to speak with them personally. So yeah, they're, they're okay. They're okay.
Perfect. Very good. Any questions for Dan this evening? All right, Chief Peterson and then Chief Newman.
Mayor and city council members, I have a couple of items for you tonight. First, our police personnel, along with fire personnel, have been notified earlier today that either their first or second vaccinations are being scheduled over the next two weeks. As you know, both our police and fire. As you know, both our police and fire personnel are certified first responders. So, um, that is why they are being vaccinated now during phase one. Secondly, we have finally received our body worn cameras this week. We'll be deploying them to all our police personnel and we'll have them trained on them in the next few weeks. Uh, though you approved the purchase and implementation of the body worn cameras almost three months ago, they have been on back order due to shutdowns in their manufacturer during the pandemic, so we are, uh, really happy and pleased that we finally got them and we can put them into use. Other than that, so, that's all I have for you tonight unless you have questions for me.
Chief, any questions for Chief Peterson this evening? All right, Chief Newman and, uh, and after, after Chief Newman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have three updates for you, uh, tonight. Our first update is that we've scheduled our first joint fire board meeting of the year for February eleventh at seven PM, and that will be a Zoom meeting. And we ended our year with four hundred and ninety-five calls for service for twenty, uh, twenty. And that was actually a seven and a half percent reduction over the previous year for, uh, uh, twenty nineteen was five hundred and thirty-five calls, and so I'm currently analyzing the data to see what I can determine, uh, was the reason for the reduction in calls, but I think that COVID had an impact. Uh, when we initially, when COVID started impacting us, uh, calls for service for about a two-month period, um, we seen a huge reduction, so I think that's gonna be where that, uh, reduction came from. And then the last update is currently we're accepting applications for the position of paid-on-call firefighter. Uh, we will look to hire up two, five firefighters with a start date of seven, one, twenty-one. And applications are available on the city website under the Fire Department section. And that's all I have for updates unless you have questions for me.
Excellent. Any questions for Chief Newman this evening? Seeing none, Pete, and then we'll go to Donovan after.
Uh, Your Honor, Council, the only thing I, I would like to note is, uh, an observation uh, of the year or so we've been in the remote environment. Uh, outside of the remote environment, all of the council have pretty regular access to the city attorney to, to chat about anything big or small that they wanna get my attention on, or just a question they always wondered how something worked. Uh, and that's not available in this environment. Uh, still important to manage information, but understand I am here, and so if there's something you'd like to know, you wanna, you wanna reach out, uh, let Pat know. Uh, and then if he doesn't know the answer, he can, he could put you in touch with me. I'd still, I still think it should go through Pat or the mayor. Um, in, in any given, uh, board of multiple, um, decision-makers, but um, I, I just wanna make sure you all know that I, I am here to answer questions if you have them. Uh, and if Pat doesn't have the answer right off the bat when you ask him.
And, and go through Pat, I'd, go, go through Pat, I, I don't, I don't need to know, and, um, then keeps me out of the loop. Excellent. Any questions for Pete this evening? All right, moving on to Donovan and then Sandy after Donovan.
Hi, Mayor, Members of Council. Um, I don't have an update, but I'm available for any questions you might have.
Any questions for Donovan this evening? All right, Sandy and Jackie after Sandy.
I have nothing more to add unless somebody has something for me.
Anybody present, anything for Sandy this evening? All right, Jackie, welcome. I'm, uh, meeting number two and, uh, just wanna give you an opportunity to see if you have anything for council this evening.
Thank you. I've just been plugging away on the senior center. I got all the voicemails taken care of. Everybody called back. Going through all those files and getting together a list of everyone to contact.
Excellent. Very good. Any, does anybody have anything for Jackie this evening? Not seeing any. Um, Karen.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. I don't have any updates this evening.
Any questions for Karen? I did have, um, I did have a question. Um, the, um, League of Minnesota City's elected official conference is still open. The registration, I think, is maybe ends the end of this week. Um, it's all virtual this year. Karen, can we send instructions to you to get us registered or should we register individually?
Um, I think, I'm not, I'm not sure what's easier from a finance standpoint, so Sandy, do you have any ideas what would be easier from a finance standpoint if, um, council just registers themselves? Is it easier to reimburse them then? Or is it easier for me to register them and then we just pay that through the city?
Um, I guess it really, yeah, yeah, either way, you know, whatever, you know, whatever makes it easier for everybody, I guess. It, it really doesn't matter one way or the another as far as finance goes.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I think when you register, what happens is you're using your email, and so they send you the registration link directly. So I'm, I'm thinking it might be easier if you register yourself and then, um, submit that receipt or whatever to, um, you can send it to me and then I can, um, get that into finance. So you guys get reimbursed for that.
Is there?
Otherwise, they're gonna send registrations to me and I'll be forwarding the registrations and.
Is, is there a P O option? Purchase order option? They could build a city directly?
I don't, I don't think so.
I think so. I did not.
I don't, I don't think they do. Yeah, I think it's just a direct pay when you get online.
Um, as a comment, I'm looking at it right now and, um, I noted that the online registration is closed. Cause it goes for six weeks and this week is the first week.
I wonder if that is a different deadline for the new electeds versus the experienced elected conference. Um.
It might be, they do two different conferences.
There might be. Hannah, were you able to get registered?
Um, I haven't contacted them, cause the one for the new is online, so I'll have to, um, contact, find an email. Um, to email someone and see if I could get registered for it.
Look and see.
Some of those sessions are later on, so maybe there's still an opportunity to get in.
Yeah, I'll look at it and I will, um, I'll look at it now for our council some information. We'll see if, um, I know they do two different ones, so.
Perfect. Council update, or Karen, anything else for council and council, anything for Karen?
I do, I do have a question though, um, and I, and maybe I shouldn't bring this up now, maybe I can just talk to Pete about it later, but at the last council meeting, we had discussed, um, with, with these licenses, the, um, liquor tobacco licenses. We had talked about that being, if, if in the event of suspension, that's a twenty-twenty license that we were talking about, so. I'm not gonna go into a conversation about it now, but we had talked about the difference between the twenty-twenty license and the twenty-twenty-one license that they all have now. So how suspensions be handled at that point? If council went that direction.
Your Honor, uh, uh, Council Karen, real quickly, the, by, by law, the, when you suspend, the council dictates the time period in which the suspension is served. Uh, and so you could dictate that it be served the next day or the next month or whatever. It will happen uh, in twenty-twenty-one and that's fine, should council make that choice?
That was the only question I had.
Very good. Let's transition to council updates. We'll start with Councilmember Hessnick and then Councilmember Munson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, um, attended the EDA meeting tonight, as you did, uh, to talk, you know, with, along with the Downtown Committee Working Group and, uh, I think Marta will like probably expand on that, so we'll not beat that horse anymore and, uh, also, uh, a few days ago, I met with, uh, Patrick about our utility building, billing, uh, met in his office here because something wasn't right with our billing and I thought, you know, we, we don't need this trouble with everybody else and found out lots of people are having problems and, and so this is gonna be for a future conversation and, and, uh, but it certainly needs to get resolved, so that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, agree. Councilmember Munson and then Councilmember Beistrum.
Sure, so I have a couple of updates. Um, I was not able to attend the FLA meeting as it was at the same time of our workshop, um, last week. But I did attend the Planning Commission meeting, um, and I know we received some emails regarding the preliminary plan for the apartment complex that is just north of the current Timber Ridge, and I just wanted to let everyone know that the Planning Commission tabled that, um, for a later date to have the developer come back with a different, um, plan. There was a lot of input from community members as well, so that was, um, that was really good. And then the other, it's more, it's not necessarily update, but I just wanna publicly thank, um, Eric Langness. His term has come to an end and he is taking some time away, but wanna thank him publicly for this, his service and his dedication to the city and he just can run a meeting so well, I have to say. He does such a nice job, so, thank you.
Yeah, I echo your comments, and he also has done a fantastic job of, um, public engagement. Um, just, I think our participation and our level of, um, feedback that E D, or that the Planning Commission is receiving is just, um, uh, it's, we're just getting a lot more volume and a lot more just information to the public on what's happening and he, he does it in a very factual way. That's just, he's, that, um, that engagement period, actually it's a great model um, for Dan and Jackie to take a look at, um, just around notification and just providing some basic information that um, sometimes our, our other channels of communication miss, so, yes.
Also does, uh, he does a nice job for what can typically be a very technical meeting in the Planning Commission of stopping and explaining to residents what's happening. And so I really appreciated that, um, at that meeting.
Agree. Very good. Any questions for Councilmember Munson tonight? All right, Councilmember Beistrum and then Councilmember Valento.
Um, just a couple of updates for me. I attended the Park, Hills and Lakes Commission meeting. Um, Commissioner Steenblock, Terry Steenblock was reappointed to the chair position. Um, they had a, a, uh, Jamie Mouché, uh, presented on a potential partnership with Forest Lake Area Schools Community Education around some summer programming. Um, and the commission approved that. There will be some, uh, uh, I kinda get undefined, but potentially some yoga in the park classes, some zumba, some kids' classes. Uh, potentially paddleboard lessons, those sorts of things down at Lakeside Park. Um, they had a lengthy discussion around the skating rinks and the warming houses, um, and did make, ultimately make a determination to, um, have both of the warming houses open at some level, of course, following the governor's orders with regard to capacity. Uh, but they just, that felt that it was really important to have them both open with the need for that outdoor recreation, uh, with COVID still prevalent. Um, ironically, I had received a phone call prior, just prior to the meeting from a representative from Forest Lake Hockey Association um, who was, uh, curious about our commitment to the hockey rinks in the community. When the high school addition was built, especially that big gymnasium, they took a couple of hockey, outdoor hockey rinks down over there. So we are minus, uh, two rinks in the community. Um, so this was a, a great opportunity for the, uh, commission, I think, to have something else to consider where their tenure plan is concerned. Um, the, the hockey associate, hockey association, association um, has a really committed group of parents and they also have some, uh, money that they are, uh, interested in spending on improving either the tower park rinks or potentially adding some additional rinks as well. So we had some conversation around that. Um, and then I attended the YMCA meeting on just a couple of high points from that. Their food distribution program continues and the demand is high, continues to be high. Um, they are open at some level, uh, beginning youth sports with about a fifty percent capacity. Uh, still needing reservations for their group and water exercise classes, lap swims, gym usage and kid stuff. Uh, but reservations are not required for the use of their exercise equipment. Um, they are offering some virtual YMCA programs, so you can, um, hop on the internet. Um, even Facebook Live, you can hop on Facebook Live and participate, uh, virtually. Um, and then some, um, really great news with regard to, uh, the Youth and Government Program. Um, nearly six hundred students in Minnesota participated, uh, over the course of the last, um, oh, just this last weekend, I believe it was. Mara, Mara might be able to clarify that a little bit. And I know several Lila students, Forest Lake students, uh, represented, um, our community very, very well. They were appointed to a variety of leadership, uh, roles within the Youth and Government Program. Um, and again, Mayor Dane is intimately aware of the Youth and Government Program. Uh, her daughters participate. Um, but we were, as a community, our youth were, were represented very, very well in that program, so, um, just wanted to report that out.
They had Lila representation as well as Forest Lake Area Schools representation, so it's good to see. Good to see from both and a very strong program that even remotely they did well, so. Great. Um, just a couple of quick updates. As Sam mentioned, um, EDA, um, and the Downtown Group heard, um, dip, from two different downtown planning groups. Um, and will, at our next meeting, circle back on that feedback, um, and, um, direct staff as to next steps. I'm incredibly encouraged by what I heard tonight. Um, both very strong, very strong planners and, um, both, I, in my opinion, could do a, a great job for us, so we, it's good to have options and, um, look forward to moving that forward at a future EDA meeting. Um, also continue to participate in the now weekly, um, kind of planning stage that the Everyone Belongs group is in. And again, it's that partnership between, um, our, the city, Forest Lake Area Schools and the YMCA. Um, they are driving towards a, um, framework and plan to be at least sketched and in strong draft mode by the end of February. We're still on track for that. And the goal would be to pull, uh, that broader group of fifty together to, um, go over that plan in mid-March. And so look forward to bringing that back. Um, this topic that we are talking about tomorrow is about sustainable organization. And of course, a topic that is of importance to us as a city as we think about how do, what is, how does the city fit into this? Um, and, um, this is, um, night one of, uh, three scheduled nights to talk about that topic. And so I look for, I, I look for some additional input points and also hearing more about how, um, we might partner with other both municipalities or townships and counties within the footprint of the Forest Lake School District, along with the school district for the YMCA. So there's a number of different options that are being considered. Um, and that's all I have for tonight. Um, I am getting a message that I maybe missed staff updates from Ryan. And also Dave, I think. Um, Ryan, I am, uh, my apologies and, um, before we get to it, let's hear, let's hear from you.
And Councilmember Valento as well.
Mayor City Council, I guess I'll just update on some projects that are kind of in motion already that you've approved, uh, Water Treatment Plant Two. Our next step there is to have the pre-construction meeting, therefore will then obtain the contractor's schedule we can share with you. The regional stormwater study that was completed down in the Headwaters area is being presented to Rice Creek Watershed Board Wednesday. And then after that, we'll be bringing that back to presentation to you guys. Uh, probably over the next several months, depending also what I hear Wednesday with the Met Council informational session and the grants there. Uh, there's a couple of grants we're pursuing right now with the Met Council, uh, for the sewer work and then, uh, LRIP application. For our local share, County State Aid Highway thirty-three, so you'll see a lot of random approvals, paperwork coming forward with some of that stuff in the future. We did receive our state aid allotment today. That's a lot better than what they originally projected in the midst of, uh, middle of COVID. You know, at first they were projecting a fifteen percent reduction down to a nine. We came in a little better than that, so, but we are a hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars less than what we received in two thousand and twenty, twenty. So we're kind of back to the same levels as what we received in two thousand and seventeen. So, big hits. Luckily, we budgeted low compared to what we received over the last several years on the construction side of things, so we're still kinda right there. Our maintenance side did take a bigger hits, uh, which will be So we're still kind of right there. Our maintenance side did take a bigger hits, which will be a, a smaller, you know, typically what comes out of that is our seal code crack feeling or double chip ceiling project. So we'll just have to adjust accordingly. That's kind of what I have for now. Obviously, you see and hear some development activity that's going on with the Platts approval tonight. You know, that's going to be a nice area to finish out. That's been sitting since two thousand and eight when it was graded with the construction of phase one. So with that, I'll open up with any questions you might have.
Any questions for Ryan? And it'll teach me to shut my list off and think I've just got the order because I don't, because I also missed Councilmember Valento. Hannah, my apologies. Update for us this evening.
Um, I attended the Rushline Corridor meeting last Thursday. And they gave an update that the environmental assessment is in the hands of the federal authorities. And they should get, be getting that back at the, around springtime this year. As an interesting note, along that fifteen mile bus route, they found twenty-eight historical properties and community members are super intrigued to find out what those properties are. And one is a roadway that is still intact from decades ago. So that'll be kind of cool to hear what those are.
Interesting.
Might be the old military road coming out of St. Paul up to Duluth. That they found portions of that all the way out into Marin and up through there and through Scandia, then kind of disappears here and there. This is what I hear from other communities too, you know, crossing these paths, the old wagon wheel. We, we have a portion of that under Highway one, that's all concrete. You know, so anytime that you guys see the roadway out there today, underneath that was part of the old wagon wheel.
Fascinating. At some point when the time is right in that project, Councilmember Valento, we should bring representatives from that group to Forest Lake just to do a workshop of the Rushline Project Corridor overall, the plan for Forest Lake, which is, I understand it is at this point, kind of a future phase dotted line. But we should, you know, just do an update workshop. We've had turnover on our council and I know the, the project has moved along. Actually, it's been, it was early in my first term, the last time we did do an in Forest Lake update. And so when the time is right for that project team, I'm happy to put it into a workshop agenda just, just to counsel education and just the community update.
Definitely.
Excellent. Any questions for Councilmember Valento this evening? Have I missed anybody? All right. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion from Council, motion from Councilmember Munson and a second from Councilmember Husnick. Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
Councilmember Valento.
Aye.
Mayor Bane.
Aye, and we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for, this has been a, a longer meeting. So appreciate all of the attention and the great conversation tonight. Have a good evening.